Welcome. At this time, I'd like for you to rise. I've asked Councilman Redcorn to say a prayer for today.
Hey, okay. I ain't that sweet, that's it. What kind of a condition? They go and say, ah, they kiss from my, I'm gonna share it. I like it. Come on, see, they eat, they ain't share that, see, they're there. And on, ah, they, well, I can see a lot, I mean, I will actually come around. They go and say, ah, ah, they, oh, the joy that they say, although, although, that's. That you give us the knowledge and the understanding to take care of our gift. I want you to, ah, I'll get you, that you gave our Osage people to take care of, to make good decisions, and to allow to continue to feed our people and our children. We ask that you watch over our government. We ask that you watch over our US government. My here, don't, ah, they, it's, it's, I, I, I share that. Let you bless that effort there that we have come together. Yeah, I got share in our top, on, on, yeah, I should pull them. It's all these things I ask you, you know, and I, amen.
Where we now? Please be seated. Roll call, please. We have a reading of a deceased. Could we have to, I would make sure of that, Councilman.
Thank you, Chairman. Reading up the deceased, Osage.
Thank you, sir.
From the allotment rolls, Patricia Patrick A. Allen, Olive Branch, Mississippi. Shan Gray, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Clarence Gray, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Linda Heskett, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Joshua Simmering, High Point, North Carolina. Connie Miller, Ponca City, Oklahoma. Ellen Letterman, Rogers, Arkansas. Gosh, yeah, enough.
Oh, wait. I've got to take a moment. And it's over. We just read this man's mother's name. And we tell him how important he does, but we recognize that. And all you have done to get where you're at today, she'd be very proud of you, and she'd be telling you to keep going. She was a warrior. And these other folks here, I want to reach out to their families and tell them, we know how you feel. We just heard some of my relatives yesterday. And that's the most important thing is to remember and pray for them. And I want to thank my brother for giving us that prayer, Mrs. Frog, that prayer, not just for the massage, it's all people. He even talked about praying for our government. And I think that's, needs to be accordingly represented today. And we did some blessings for our people, all, all the, with that, I'll go with the agenda, roll completion.
Councilman Big Course?
Here.
Councilman Chisholm?
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Second Chair, Reddick?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Chappaker?
Present.
Chairman Waller?
Here.
And thank you. With that, I'd like to go into item number four, Superintendent's Report, Superintendent Addams.
Thank you. I'd like to read another report for May meeting of the license, two thousand twenty-four. Start with oil, gas, and water royalty for May twenty twenty-four production. Total oil produced, two hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred eighty-one point zero one barrels. Royalties paid was three million four hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents. So the gas produced, one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred seven MCF. The royalties paid is twenty-four thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Total gas liquids produced was one hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred and forty-six gallons. Royalties paid were two thou, or twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Total tank bottom oil produced was seventy-seven point one eight barrels. And the royalties paid was two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. The water usage royalty paid was fifty dollars, and there was no water disposal royalty paid. For rentals and bonuses, for oil and gas rentals paid, we received an amount of five hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. There was no bonus or paid for oil and gas, and there was no rental paid for saltwater easement rental. We received one thousand eight hundred dollars, and there was no late payment charges collected. For other minerals produced, APAC produced twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-seven point four eight tons and paid thirty-two thousand forty-nine dollars and eight cents royalties for May. Candy Tree Pressure produced six thousand four hundred twenty-nine point zero three tons and paid six thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and three cents for April. Burbank Materials and Wilson Ranch produced zero tons and paid zero royalties prospectively. Rocky Banks produced two hundred and seven, or two hundred and seventy cubic yards and paid two hundred and twenty-five dollars in royalties for April and May. And then the Smith Brothers produced one hundred and fifty-two cubic yards and paid one hundred and fourteen dollars in royalty for May. For producing wells, we have on record total sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine of those. One, or eleven thousand nine hundred and sixteen are oil. Oil and gas represents one hundred and eighteen for CO2 injection. Seventy wells for saltwater and waste injection. There's a weight, saltwater disposal waste injection is two thousand three hundred and twenty-four. For gas, there's one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine. There were four hundred and ninety-four that were TA. There are fifty-one water and gas injection wells, and then for water supply, there's one hundred and seven. For approved permits, there were seven workover permits approved. There were thirteen plug-in permits approved, and there were zero emergency plug-in workover, emergency workovers and drilling permits. And there were no drilling completions reported in the month of May. And that completes my report.
I got a question. The Burbank Materials, have they shut down, or were they closed for the month, or pot there? Usually one of the more busier quarries in the county.
I will have to inquire, not familiar with their status, I'll talk about it. But I will look into it and report back.
Okay.
Council. Do we have any questions?
And I had, I had shown nothing.
Second month.
Is it, is it their second month showing zero?
I think so.
Something I arrived there.
Chairman, also, I brought Russell Bellamy with me. He's our GIS specialist. He's the one who prepared these producing well records. It brought to my attention a few months ago that these numbers have been static for some time. So I got with my team and explored solutions that would allow us to provide a better. I don't think this is entirely accurate, but I think we're lifeless for reality just because we're relying on records that have been submitted to us. We haven't been able to go and visually inspect, do a field inspection of the entire mineral estate. But we have brought this more in line with reality, so if there are any questions about these numbers, I brought Russell here. Because in the past, you guys have inquired about how we came up with this, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions if there were any.
I just want to give a Russell Bellamy commercial. You've done real well helping me in my business when you're working now, you're now with the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
Yes, sir.
And you'll be able to help us in the same manner to come out here and strike the leg, where is our effort at? And how much of the lead you're afoot, whether you're using it, et cetera. In these cases here, I think it's going to be very helpful for us. Thank you so much.
I did want to acknowledge him on the record, too. If you've seen the maps that have been produced in the past year or so, since Russell was joined on, there's a, the quality of the work he produces is absolutely top notch.
Very good. And that's your boss talking. Council, are there any other questions? Yes, Councilman Redcorn.
I appreciate that effort on that. And I know Russ, working with him, not with him, but next door. These are all GIS type of data that's entered in the locations. Is that all kind of worked out, or just?
So I can explain how I came up with those numbers if you'd like.
Okay.
So basically, when Superintendent asked me to help generate this report, what I did, about a year ago, I mapped out every active lease within the mineral state. And so my first step was to filter all of the wells that are not within the boundaries of these leases out.
Out, okay.
And then from the remaining wells, all the ones that were dry holes or plugged out, move those as well. And then categorize the wells based on the type of production that they're currently doing.
So these are active, these are all our leases?
Those are wells that are capable of production on an active lease. So that doesn't mean those are the only open bores in the county. But those are the only bores that you potentially could generate rather than from at this moment, because they're unleashed, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And then the water, gas, and gas versus water. Supply, water, supply, saltwater, water, gas, and as soon as quickly can summarize what's in there.
So there's actually several different categories, and some of those, what I did was I took the previous reports that ended up provided by the Superintendent and tried to categorize the way the data is encoded in the GIS layers to match those categories. So you guys saw something similar as far as the categories are concerned. For next month's report, I can break it down a little bit.
Okay.
More detailed instead of these eight categories, the actual total categories that are recognized by the USGS for, for well types.
Okay.
So some of those I kind of lumped together just to make the report consistent with the way it had been done previously. But I can, I can just give you the raw data if you'd like to.
Yeah, and then I guess water supply, what kind of talk in there? Is that? On water, saltwater?
Saltwater, I would, I would imagine. That's just the way that the data is encoded in GIS.
Okay.
And so I take the information given to me. I don't generate information.
Okay.
You know, I'm a data reviewer and an analyst. I don't create the data. So as the well type changes over the years through conversions, things like that, and symbology is updated, well code is updated, that's the information I run off of. And there's, those numbers will continue to change. The database this information is pulled from is a living database. It's updated hundreds of times daily by myself. So you will see some variation of those, and that might be a matter of permits closing out, you know, official reports being submitted. Spinning documentation that had been displaced forty years ago, identifying a well as being plugged, you know, in the eighties, but it just didn't represent on our black book as being plugged, has happened as well.
Okay.
Those numbers will all be changed.
Well, thank you, sir. That's a great word. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? With that, thank you very much, and we'll be talking real quick. I like that idea. Disgratulation, some of that's that old script, they just kept that going to keep the pressure off of their regimental. So whatever you find out is going to be good for all of our head right up there.
Yes, sir.
Superintendent, we're going to go through the agenda, but I will ask you to come back at the starting of executive. I want you to hear the second item, HB. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Like to have a report from our BTFA, George Carriker. I see this is, this is, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here in Travis Place, Stephanie Davis, BTFA. I have nothing new to report, business as usual, so, yeah, everything's going fine. We implemented a new CRM for BTFA, and it seems to be more life version of our system. We are taking a little longer time when we are dealing with a beneficiary to navigate through the new system. But other than that, it's been beneficial to us to help our clients better, our beneficiaries.
And you've been waiting on this upgrade quite a while, haven't you?
Well, yeah. Yeah, so they, it's been in the works for several months, but, yeah. The, our actual accounting system is the one that was upgraded in 2019 that we're still navigating through a little more difficulty. But the CRM has been beneficial to our clients, so, yeah. We still have, you know, the same business hours and the same call numbers. Main number is nine one eight two eight seven five seven nine one. Our trust beneficiary call center, the toll-free number, which is eight 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 six seven eight six eight three six, is still under the nine o'clock to four thirty hours, which is mountain time, so sometimes you will put the agency. I tend to have a later schedule in the day, so a lot of times I answer my phone past that time, so I'm. No, they are not open on Saturdays any longer, so, yeah, I apologize for that, so, yeah.
Council, do we have any other questions? With that, thank you, dear. We appreciate you.
You guys have a good day.
Yes, ma'am. Like to go to item number six, treasure report. Mrs. Moore, how are you? Please have a seat.
Treasure practice, I wasn't able to make it this morning, but I have a report, the numbers for guys for the month of June. The total assets was nine hundred and two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Liabilities is fifty thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. The fund equity is eight hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. And there was a change in the fund equity, an increase of one hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Revenue for the year is one million. Month-to-date for this period was two hundred and fifty thousand. The expenditures month-to-date was fifty-seven thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. And the year-to-date was five hundred and fifty-nine thousand and fifteen dollars. So that leaves us with the revenues over expenditures of one hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Year-to-date, four hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Current year fund balance increased in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, beginning of the current fiscal year. We did not, we have not received our IIM reports for our headright account and other reports. So when we get those, we'll get those numbers over to you.
Yes, ma'am.
And everything else should be good to go this week, so.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? With that, thank you, Mr. Brown. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day.
With that, like to go on to the next item, please. We are going to go into new business, number seven, A, Grand Resources, Extension Saltwater Easement. Mr. Robinellis, probably going to just join us here, please.
Take a seat.
However you'd like.
Thank you. So I want to talk about two things. First, I'd like to talk about some lease extensions. I don't know if that's possible, at least renewals. But all of this sits in the spirit of long-term partnerships. And way back in early two thousand two, with the vision of the Minerals Council and Joe Hewlett to come up with the idea of concessions to provide protection to your lease bores, so they could try new ideas and come up with ways to consistently produce more oil tomorrow than you did yesterday, than we did yesterday. And that spirit of partnership is maintained, whether it's the Minerals Council, whether it's the BIA and Field Superintendent and Field Inspectors to, whenever anything pops up as, hey, Scott, or hey, I talked to your pumper, we have a landowner complain, then, yes, sir, we'll take care of it. And if you ask me to stand down while the process works out, I will do that because you, the BIA and the Minerals Council, are, are my partners. And without the goodwill of everyone involved, all the partners, and I actually brought one of my partners with me on the AVAN project.
Yes.
The AVAN project would not exist without the forward thinking of the Minerals Council and Joe Hewlett way back then.
It was tribal council, outside of it.
Tribal council. And since then, we produced over a million barrels of oil from that TA field that has generated in excess of twelve million dollars in royalty to the Mineral Trust. So that's kind of my background, and that's kind of where the spirit from which I come asking the question. We, when we took down these nine-quarter sections in October of 2021, we came with our plan, and I don't know, has everyone had a chance to look at the letter I submitted that outlines the delays and the details of it? So I don't need to, okay, so I brought copies if anyone needs them. So we, you know, planned our development, and we rely on also the landowner cooperation to find something that's reasonable and fair. And most landowners that I work with, I find a fair and reasonable compromise that satisfies, you know, not everything, but most of things that are doable, right? I, I don't have any progress when I'm stonewalled and I can't make any progress. So there was one landowner in particular that was central to the development of these nine-quarter sections that from the start was obstructionist. And the, and the question that we kept running into was the route of ingress and egress. And the BIA, the Superintendent, and I think two or two or three different acting Superintendents all came back with the route of ingress and egress was going to be the historic lease roads that have been there since the twenties. And that was the detail. And then every time we get another appeal and another appeal, and we wasted twenty-one, over twenty-one months of our thirty-six-month term lease to be the partner that I hope you guys think I am, right? With the BIA says, Scott, can you please hold up until the appeal process works? Because this landowner just wants to hold up, and I'm like, guys, my lease term's running. But yes, sir, I will wait. I will honor our spirit, and I'll do whatever you guys ask of me. But that has put me in a position where now I have five months left. So on that, I'm requesting either extension or a no-bonus renewal. So I can continue the success I've had on this west side of AVAN, on the east side of AVAN. And based on the obstructionist approach, I've changed my operating focus to where I'm going to build another tank battery, so I don't have to go right through Mr. Goodman. I can go around him and not make him central to my operations.
Yes, sir. Council, do you have any questions?
I have a comment. As far as an extension of your existing leases, I don't think our leases allow for that. There's no provision in the body of our lease to allow for amendments or extensions. So the lease could be terminated prematurely and new leases granted. But extension, I don't think is, is an option for us.
Your second effort will be?
I do have a question. What is the, what, with your adversarial, I guess, situation that involved the BIA, what, what was the primary objection of the surface owner? What was, what was the, was there any one particular incident or one particular subject that, that got, that, that affected cooperation?
Well, it, it really was from the first day where, you know, my brother negotiated some of the original terms and said, you know, five thousand dollar cattle guard in as opposed to a five hundred dollar cattle guard, if that's what makes you happy. And then we started to use the cattle guard. He goes, no, you can't use this cattle guard. You have to find another route. So that's where it really started, where we negotiated in the spirit of cooperation. And then when we started operations and he wanted us to do something different, to put another cattle guard in and move our route of ingress and egress, that was the, that was the first thing. And then the rest of it, in my opinion, was he, the landowner just really didn't want us on his land. I think that was really it. And I want to answer your question, Councilman.
Yes, second chair, ready. I read where you, you had this dispute in state court. Is it, is it still a state court now with a TRO?
So, thank you for reminding me of that. So, you know, I mean, he, Mr. Goodman threatened violence, threatened guns on my employees where we just moved the employees off. And my brother called the sheriff and met Mr. Goodman out there with the sheriff and said, we have the right to be here. This is our lease. We have a right. You can't continue to force us not to be on your property to the point we had to get a restraining order. And then when we did access his property, we paid for the sheriff to be on site the entire time we're on his property just so nothing would be out of hand. And that was, you know, that was just extra expense on us, but we did it just to keep the peace, because that was the right thing. And then, I think in March, he burnt his pasture. Now, it's hard to prove that it was an intent to damage infrastructure that was still on the ground, because it got too wet. And we didn't want to damage his pasture by ditching in the flow lines, so everything was still on the ground to burn our flow lines up. And then we basically asked the district court to impose the temporary, or I don't know what the legal term is, but to hold him to his temporary, to his restraining order, to not impact and damage our equipment. So that was May twenty-eighth, and I think the attorneys were asking to put him in jail just to say, guys, just, we want to get along. Like, just please leave us alone and let us do our job. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? Council. Thank you, Chairman. So these leases were three-year leases?
Yes, sir.
And how much time has lasted since you had, since they were effective?
October twenty-one, so we have five months left.
Five months left. So you're just now being able to get access to, to your wells?
Yes. And, I mean, and I had to re, like, I built a tank battery on the north side. I put primary power on the north side, planning on going through his property. That's kind of my central corridor. And now because of the dramatic drama, time, and dollar draining, I've modified my operations. We're on another tank battery on the south side and go around him when I can. So I guess he's achieved part of his objective. The squeaking wheel gets the, gets the grease, but I still need to operate and be able to move forward. I'm just going to minimize my exposure to that one more.
So I was trying to find the regulations. So if I'm not mistaken, ultimately, you've got some relief from the district court or the state?
Yes.
And then, I guess, after lengthy appeals, I've read your timeline, and it was, it was really an incredible story. But ultimately, the BIA ruled in your favor, that you could use the roads?
Yes.
And there weren't new roads?
There were not new roads.
You said the existing roads. I think there is language in that existing roads are the most preferred, but.
To not do more damage and not, like, recreate the wheel, then the roads already went to every well on his property. And that's what the BIA consistently upheld, that that was the right route of ingress and egress, because it does the least damage, and they're already there. And he bought the property.
And, my question.
He bought the property, and I don't know exactly when he bought the property, but he hadn't been there since the nineteen twenties or thirties or forties. But I don't have the specific answer of when he bought the property, but he bought the property with the infrastructure and the existing roads already placed.
So what is it you're asking of us?
Well, I'm asking for either new leases at no bonus to allow me to continue the development and not penalize me for being the partner that said, okay, if you guys want me to pause, I'll pause, not you, but the BIA and Mr. Goodman, to say, all right, I'll let the process play out. But I don't feel like I should have to reinstate new leases and pay the bonus when I was being the partner that you guys hoped I would, I think?
Yeah.
And it cost me time.
Councilman Redcorn, how much production are we talking here?
Right now, we're making nothing.
Production, I mean, so you're asking me to extend your lease for nothing?
Yes, sir.
I mean, with no production?
Well, I, yes, sir, with no production.
I mean, what are you wanting to get? What production are we talking here?
Well, I mean, the west side of AVAN, I produced a million barrels.
Okay.
And the east side of AVAN has the. And the east side of AVAN has the quality rock, higher quality rock, so twenty-five to thirty barrels in the first year.
Right.
I mean, that's a reasonable number. I'm not going to give you.
How many wells? How many wells have you got? You're targeting.
I have one, I have two wells that, one well's equipped, ready to produce, one well is tested. And two wells are tested, ready to produce, but not equipped. One well is.
Any injection out there?
And that's the second, that's the next.
What's the status of that one?
The injection well was, it was tested in twenty-one, and that's the injection easement that I'm asking for as the next item on the agenda that is on the south side of the field, close to the tank battery I'm going to build.
So what's your proposal?
So my request, are you talking on the leases specifically?
What's your proposal to us, the Mineral Council?
So my request to the Minerals Council is to provide grand resources with leases to reinstate or renew or issue new leases for the nine-quarter sections that I have not been able to produce effectively because of delays for no bonus and to let me continue to do my job. That's.
How much longer do you want?
You could, I throw myself on the mercy of the court if it's.
Why wouldn't you do that?
If it's one year, if it's two years.
You get it done in a year.
I can get it done in a year.
So moved?
Eighteen months, like, I mean, I mean.
You're here asking us or?
I mean, like, I mean, what, what ideally is three years to give me enough time to do everything?
Give me a year.
Or we can do two years, but.
One year.
Again, I throw myself on the mercy of the court.
One year. That's a, that's a.
Yes, sir.
So it's on the southeast of thirty-two. That is not one of the leases I'm asking to be reissued.
It's not on the media, though.
It's not, it's, so, and that's, I'm asking for a three-hundred-dollar a year injection easement for nine-twenty-two W, and that is the OS number two-three-five-two, located in the southeast quarter of section thirty-two. Yes, ma'am. Good.
Yes.
I just wonder, can maybe our chief of staff might have an opinion on this, whether or not the saltwater disposal easement request could be a separate resolution to deal with the, with the properties for the new leases by separate resolution. And then we probably want to hear what your offer is on saltwater disposal easement. But I also have another concern is that if we're going to grant new leases for these nine tracks, what would be the effective date? There's still that term left on the original leases. Did you say five months or so? So should we ask for a premature termination and then issue new leases effective the same day as the termination? Or, yep, our lease forms don't have the ability to have a cop lease, which I would like someday to address that. I mentioned that before. But maybe by just the nature of the resolution, maybe that serves as a cop lease. But anyway, something for discussion. When, when is going to be the effective date of the new leases? Do, does he still have this, allow him to have the five months, then the, then the new leases take effect? It might be cleaner to have the superintendent request termination of the existing ones with the approval of the new leases having the same effective date of the termination. Just a thought.
Counselor, was there any other questions before I say so?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Did BIA ever come out and help you with this? Was there a field man out there to help?
Every, every, we, I've had we met out there three times, six times.
Okay.
We were, I mean, a lot. The sheriff, BIA, two acting superintendents, Mark, Lee, Ira. I don't know if Ira spent much time on this, but I'd say we had five or six meetings.
That's my curiosity.
Yes, sir.
Counselor.
He's got a motion on the floor.
Yes, sir. I have a motion on the floor. I'd like a second. Call for a second.
Second.
Second. Open discussion. I'd like to add one thing. My discussion is that I would wait for the five months to, there is no adding on a lease before that terminates. But if with the council's approval, they can at that time give the lea, new leasing that you need even after it could be possibly shown terminated. Today, it should only be the resolution for saltwater disposal, which will confirm its presence under this element, and then you will have it available for your next. It, the question will be, Counselor, on the motion is that that lease has to be done before we actually extrapolate giving a new one. Yes, Counselor?
I've been on this council four times. Sometimes I think we try to do the business of the BIA. That's their decision on how they want to handle. They'll come back and tell us. To me, we're neighbors. We, we tell them, we want this man to continue or we'll say goodbye to him. That's our decision. How they're going to work that out, they'll come and tell us. But we need, to me, we need to let them know we want this to continue. And with the one year extension, they'll work that out, come back and talk to you, tell them, here's what we need to fill the void. And, and to me, not try to do their business. They're here, that's their, their experts at it. We can kind of guess and surmise what they might do, but I don't want that discussion to hold up the vote of the intent of us as a council.
Yes, sir. And are you going to add a date to that? Are you going to add a date to that on the starting?
We want to ask for one-year extension.
Yes.
Do I have a second on that motion? Counselor.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I don't like the terminology of extension because our current leases don't allow for an extension. I'd like to have, have the resolution read something similar to a cop lease that upon the, the expiration of the primary term of the existing leases, the new lease, the new one-year primary term will commence to have the same effective date and give that instructions to the, to the superintendent that build it in the body of our resolution and let the superintendent, you know, work with it from there.
I agree. Amendment motion. Include that on the others.
Thank you.
After that, are you good with that call for the question?
This is on the amendment, right?
Yes, sir.
Can we?
Say it again?
No, can we read the labels onto the record? And these are all separate leases?
Yes. In oil, gas, combination, less than exempt, coal, methane?
Yes. Well, we could, we've got a match with it.
Do you want me to read them?
If you will, please, for the record.
Okay. Northeast quarter, section five, twenty-three north, twelve east. Northwest quarter, section five, township twenty-three north, range twelve east. Northeast quarter, section six, township twenty-three north, range twelve east. Northeast quarter, section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, range twelve east. Northwest quarter, section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, range twelve east. Southeast quarter, section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, range twelve east. Southwest quarter, section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, range twelve east. And northwest quarter, section thirty-two, township twenty-four north, range twelve east. And southwest quarter of section thirty-two, township twenty-four north, twelve east.
Thank you, Chairman. You may have said so early on. If you did, I, this, did you, have you recited what the royalty is of the existing leases?
It was twenty percent royalty.
Twenty percent royalty. Thank you.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, do we add for a motion to do the saltwater disposal? Counselor, we need a saltwater disposal motion? At this time?
Would you propose?
Yes, sir. Counselor.
I'm requesting a three-hundred-dollar annual easement for Grand Resources to use the well nine-twenty-two W located in the southeast quarter, section thirty-two, twenty-four north, twelve east, and that is OS number two-three-five-two. And I'm asking for a three-hundred-dollar annual saltwater easement.
I'll second that. We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Redcorn, seconded by Chairman Waller for saltwater disposal. Any discussion?
Counselor. Thank you, Chairman. This, this track that you identified that the disposal wells are, it's an existing disposal well. You said it passed MIT, it was tested in twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Is this a, an orphaned abandoned well, as far as you know, or? It's on a, there's not a lease, it's not currently leased for oil and gas like someone else.
Correct. There's no active well and gas lease on it. And it is authorized by rule, EPA, EPA authorized by rule injection well. That we need to just establish that it will pass MIT and then it can be, be active.
Well, so the permit had terminated from a previous operator?
It's, we're.
I would think that you might have to re-permit the well.
No, ABR, ABR permits still are.
Oh, because of by rule?
Yes, by rule.
Okay, all right.
That's all I have, Chairman.
And that will be reviewed on the assignment effort from the European affairs. But our resolution's ready to go. Call for a question?
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there anything else, Neil?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. With that, I'd like to turn my hand to that seven, seven B, R and D, and new lease, Kevin Robinson. How are you, Kevin?
Good.
Sir, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Waller. Colonel. Today I'm here to ask for a new lease on the Middle East quarter, eleven twenty-one eight. I'd like to offer a three-thousand-six-hundred-dollar bonus and at a point of sale royalty rate. This is a oil lease form.
Oil lease on? Is this a joint of the leases on which you've already had?
No, sir. This is closer to home.
That's what I was saying, I guess. Counselor, do we have any questions? Counselor.
Is there any equipment on it?
Yes, I believe there is some put it on the tank battery. There are some pumping units, but most of them's kind of been fed through by people.
Thank you. They got caught with that. All right. Has the lease been terminated?
Yes, sir.
Yes, here, go around here.
Okay, so that was the landowner. We only get into this through the band.
Uh, cancel. Yeah, that's why it's a little stiffer with the law all the way.
Okay.
You got to do what you got to do.
Okay. So it's a landowner.
At this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Was the lease, the, the previous lease terminated or canceled?
Terminated.
Terminated for lack of production, I guess. Did you used to have it? Was it yours?
No.
Who used it? Who's lease was it?
It was a man named Steve Smith. I'm not sure what the company name was.
Oh, I remember that. Yeah, that's down.
Thank you, Joe.
Prue Road, Frontier Shores. Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
I do not know where that's at. I have never been there.
Thank you, Chair. I think the motion we accept.
You're lost getting up to want to produce.
I have a motion on the floor by Counselor Redcorn, seconded by Chairman Waller. Any other discussion?
Chair, none?
Call for a question.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes, definitely.
Motion passes.
Counselor, I'd like to take a short break, then we come back to seven C, Airdune Carbon Technologies and Carbon Capture Presentation.